I'm still in Rochester.
And notice you said we call.
Absolutely right.
This study session of the Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at 5:31 PM on Tuesday, December 10th, 2024, in room 137 of the Edison Building. The Board acknowledges this site and all RPS sites are situated on the ancestral land of the Dakota people, and we honor the Dakota nations and the sacred land of all indigenous peoples. Present at this meeting are School Board members, Superintendent Kent Pecel, a non-voting ex officio member, and Assistant School Board Clerk Ms. Lori Sam. Ms. Sam, would you please call the roll?
Director Bowles.
Here.
Director Suth.
Here.
Director Mathieu.
Here.
Director Lawson.
Here.
Director Martin.
Here.
Chair Nathan.
Here.
Chair Shorwack.
Here.
At this time, we offer the opportunity to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, our nation, under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Item 2.1 is approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Move approval.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda has been approved. The agenda and documents for this meeting are available online at rochesterschools.org/simply. Our focus topic tonight is the Rethinking Funding Proposal. Superintendent Pecel.
Thank you, Chair Nathan, and Board members. I want to first start by introducing two colleagues who are here with us virtually. Kevin Wenzel and Dan Hegner are with Afton Partners, who are our national technical assistance firm that's been working with us on the Rethinking Funding Proposal. They are here tonight in particular to listen to the dialogue, the discussion, the questions, as they are continuing to help us in producing at least two more versions of the model before you vote in January. Kevin, at least we can see you in a very large screen. Let's test the technology here and see if both you and Dan can just briefly come off mute and give us a quick intro to who you are and your background, and then we will jump into the subject tonight. And we knew there'd be a delay. That's quite a delay.
Hi Superintendent. We're, yeah, we're very delayed, so I'm happy to do that. We just heard your intro. Very quickly, my name's Kevin Wenzel, Senior Director here at Afton Partners. I'm joined by my colleague, Dan Hegner, and we, yeah, we're happy to, I think mostly listen in today if we're going to be delayed. But yeah, happy to have helped Rochester and to hear the discussion tonight.
That sounds great, and thank you for being here, and we now know how long the delay is. So that's actually, I'm glad we did that. We have got a pretty meaty PowerPoint to get through, and I plead guilty to practicing worst-practice presentation tonight, which is that I'm going to read, hopefully not word-for-word, components of this PowerPoint, because we know we're at the point where Board members are looking for specificity and also materials that you can refer back to as we enter the next stages of this process. I think two things that I would just briefly reiterate before we turn to that presentation are: Number one, I know that whenever you are contemplating a significant change, there is an understandable tendency to revert to the status quo, because it is known. I think, as certainly this Board decided when it approved a far-reaching strategic plan in 2021, if we remain with the status quo, we will remain with the outcomes that we have in our current state. And I think we've been very clear that that is not the intent. That doesn't mean that everything in this proposal that we're about to update you on is fully ready for prime time and doesn't need to change, but that I think there does need to be a reminder. Certainly, I've thought this myself, including last night as we had a really good discussion with our Community Budget Advisory Committee, that we have to realize that the comfort level that goes with the status quo doesn't necessarily lead to achieving some of the aspirations that we have for our kids. The final point that I'll just reiterate, which is not so much for School Board members as the rest of the community, is that the vote we are asking you to take on January 7th would be to direct us to integrate the final version of this model into the budget you would approve in June, meaning there would be many months in which to test and refine technical aspects of the model. We're looking for the endorsement of the conceptual model by early January, which, as Board members are aware, is time-sensitive, because John, Andy, and the team need to begin building out the budget right after that meeting. So with that, let's turn to the PowerPoint, which is up on the screen, if I can bring it up. We are here on December 10th. One of the requests that Board members made of us was to provide a refined listing of the positions and functions that would be in the four categories of the balanced budget model. You can see that summarized on the slide that is on the screen and which Board members and the community have electronically. It is important to note that while this is a much more exhaustive list than you saw previously, it is not encyclopedic, and so it is still illustrative. It is indicative of the positions that would be in the district-required component, which would largely be allocated by full-time equivalent positions or FTE, as we currently do now, in two categories of school administration and general education, essentially allocating our educational program at both the elementary and secondary levels in the way we do today. You can also see, in the school-managed category, positions that would have increased flexibility, so that schools would be able to tailor the learning supports and other resources, including potentially additional investments in things like lowering class size across those positions. If you move further to the right, you see that centrally managed component, all of which are positions in schools, but that, like special education teachers and staff, multilanguage learner staff, are allocated from the central level. And then finally, you see the central office. One of the points that came up in our Community Budget Advisory Committee yesterday is that while we have listed here the departments that exist in the central office, we need to provide you and other stakeholders with a more detailed listing of the specific functions that exist within each of those offices, so that will be forthcoming. Board members also received with tonight's study session an even more detailed list of the positions that are listed in our budget book, also broken into the four categories of this model. Finally, on this very full graphic, is another thing Board members asked us for, which is a mapping of the commitments that the Board made to the community in the 2024 referendum. And you can see those are noted by asterisks. And in each case, whether those investments fall in the district-required, school-managed, centrally managed categories, we're confident that we can, in this new model, meet all of the commitments for funding those investments that we made during the referendum campaign. So we are tracking them, and I'm glad to come back to any of those issues, as Board members would find it valuable. So moving on, there are a number of really important questions that lie ahead of us, but as I've been increasingly talking with a wide range of people about this proposal, there are a few critical bottom-line points that I think it's essential to understand as we move into digging into the details here. And the first is that in both our current budget state and in the balanced budget model, all schools are funded tied to enrollment. And so some of the changes that we're seeing in school funding levels under the move to the balanced budget model would be happening anyway, even if the Board made no change in our budget model because of those enrollment changes. And it's very important to keep that in mind. Second, as we look at the projections by school of the impact that implementing the balanced budget model would have, it's important to note that that balanced budget model includes a 3% inflationary increase of all costs, whether it's staff benefits or operational costs. That can look like new money that could be spent on new projects. It's funding that, as anybody who pays their household expenses knows, needs to cover the increased cost of current business. Point three, the balanced budget model does include the costs and investments from the 2024 referendum, as was just shown with an asterisk on the previous slide. Those are commitments we believe can be fully met by the balanced budget model, but it's important to keep in mind that the referendum was not about new investments. It was about financial stability for our school district and avoiding raising class size, closing schools, and making other draconian cuts. Number four, this is in some ways what should really be number one. Under the balanced budget model, most schools will be able to maintain current staffing if they choose to do so, with the exception of schools that are experiencing enrollment declines and some of our current Title I schools. Now, that brings us to point number five, which we spoke about at some length in our last session. In our current budget model in RPS, we concentrate federal Title I funding on a limited number of elementary schools and some secondary schools, like our high school Alternative Learning Center, that have poverty rates over the required percentage that the federal government requires us to allocate title funding for. So we have really concentrated historically those dollars on a limited number of schools. In the balanced budget model, I'm proposing that we use those dollars to also support middle schools and high schools and a broader set of schools. There is a cost to that. There's a reduction that's there. Those schools have not only had Title I funding in RPS, they have had the state of Minnesota's funding for low-income students, the compensatory education aid, which is not in existence in many states. And so they have had a real combination of federal funding tied to low-income students and very significant state funding. And that's why I believe, even though it's not a simple thing, we can make those reductions to allocate the title funding more broadly, because the same students that were being served in those elementary schools are still with us in our middle and high schools. Point six, under the balanced budget model, a significant number of schools would receive increased funding due to that reallocation of Title I and the fact that we would shift our compensatory education aid from 80% of the total going directly to schools to 100% of the total going directly to schools. And then finally, as we've also talked about at previous Board meetings, our high schools would experience modest reductions, roughly five or six full-time equivalent positions, through a shift in how we fund post-secondary education options, our CTEC and our PTEC programs. Currently, we both allocate funding to post-secondary options providers like Rochester Community Technical College, or we pay salaries for our staff at CTEC. But when we do that, we do not reduce the funding that our high schools receive through the general fund. That's not a sustainable strategy at the large number of students we have taking those classes. And so we would use a three-year rolling average, where we'd reallocate those dollars from our high schools. Now fortunately for the high schools, the increase that they would see from other funding sources, like Title I and compensatory, would more than make up for that decrease. And so we would fix essentially a double-dipping in our current system of paying twice for a student who's taking classes, but the other components of the model would enable our high schools to do that without needing to cut those five or six staff positions. So some really critical points there that I wanted to begin with at the outset. Moving on, and again, oops, excuse me, I'm looking at my chart in this one. There are a number of issues that we are working on that have come up, especially as we've continued with feedback sessions with all of our administrators who chose to participate, many, many did, with our Community Budget Advisory Committee, and with written feedback that we've gotten. And I want to briefly highlight those. In some ways, these are contextual issues for the model, but they're really critical ones for you to be aware that we are cognizant of. First of all, training and support for school principals and for our directors and other central office administrators in how you allocate these resources in this model will be critical. It's something we're already talking with Kevin and Dan and their colleagues at Afton about, because they have significant experience in that kind of leadership capacity building. We are also working, and we'll be talking in a moment, about our 2025 Annual Board Calendar Draft. And on that agenda is our new school continuous improvement planning process. That is critical, because this budget model is intended to resource that process. And so we are very actively working on what that process should look like, and I'm glad to talk more about it later if it's helpful. We know that when you're putting more decision-making authority and resources at the site level, you need a defined process for how those plans will be made, how those budgets will be developed. So we're also working on what should be the required and optional participation on school continuous improvement teams or skip teams. Then similarly, what process will those teams use to develop the plans that guide their investments? And how do we support that from the central office level? And then what's the process for review and approval at my level, based upon criteria that you as Board members set for those school? Do you have site-level autonomy with system-level support and accountability? Similarly, we need a process for how school principals will develop their annual budgets under this budget model if you approve it, and how that, just like the skip plan, will receive central support and approval. And then finally, really importantly, is something we've spent less time on in our discussions with you as a Board. How do we actually fully develop our central office budgets in that fourth and final category? And in particular, how do we make sure we have resources for major change initiatives, like what we've done with the adoption of our WIT and Wisdom curriculum, or the adoption of a new student information system, or curricular enhancement in other areas? And how do we have funding for other major operational initiatives, like adopting a new student information system? We've got to resource those things, because when we don't, we all feel the consequences of living, as we are right now, with a Skyward system of our student information system that is so dated the company is about to stop supporting it. And so that central office piece is there. A few more critical design issues that we are working on and that we will be either including in the final version of this model, or some of them are things that really need to be answered before we give you a final proposal in June. These are more nuts-and-bolts points. Number nine, we need to figure out the traveling staff issue. It's something that Mona, as our Chief Academic Officer, has been digging into, and it's something that our finance staff has been looking at for quite a while. There's both a financial aspect and an educational aspect of how we share, especially staff who provide what we call our special services at the elementary level, but also other services across the district. Number 10, we are thinking hard about our professional development funding. The proposal would put more professional development funding at the school level, which makes sense in many respects, because they know the staff who need the support. But there are some instances, as we're currently experiencing with the REACT implementation and a new curriculum, where we need to centrally require people to participate in professional development. And so we can handle that two ways. We could take more money off the top and reserve it centrally, or we could say, in relevant issue instances, school sites must use their professional development dollars for certain required district professional development. So that's a design issue that we're also thinking through. We are looking at the process for adjusting our budgets for fluctuations in enrollment during the year. We have got a process that very diligently sets our budgets based on a projection of enrollment in the late spring and then an adjustment in early October, but kids and families come and go throughout the year. And so wanting to be as responsive as we can to those realities, while also realizing you need to hire staff and build your class sizes, is another issue that we're grappling with. Number 12, we have got a series, as this Board knows well, of requirements in reporting for both statute and board policy. Everything from the Comprehensive Achievement and Civic Readiness Report that you just approved and the Achievement and Integration Report that you just approved, and things like the Staff Development Report that Board Policy requires every year. We're working to build those into this process, so that they are not separate activities that have to be organized every year as we move forward. Number 13, the balanced budget model largely holds current course offerings at the secondary level in particular constant. It also doesn't change the structure of the elementary school day in particular. A number of staff who have provided feedback to the model to date have asked, "That makes sense on one hand, but how can the model support future innovation in program content, in class offerings, and in school structures?" That's something that is not inherent in the design of the model. And then finally, there's a need to make sure that we are accounting for some priorities that are not currently funded, but that are important to our students and our families. And one example that has come up frequently is not only curriculum, which we've talked about at the Board table, but playground upgrades. There's a longstanding historical expectation in Rochester that PTAs will help raise money for elementary school playgrounds. And that is not equitable, and it's also not efficient, because then we get playgrounds that are out of date and in some cases not safe. And so we need to build in funding for a regular cycle of playground upgrades that at least has a core base from the school district level that every 15 or 17 years, an elementary school gets a playground update. Because as any kid will tell you, the playground is not an unimportant part of an elementary school. And this has been a major issue of concern for some of our PTA members since I got to Rochester. And this is just one of those examples. So those are a number of the design issues that we are working on. And then I picked a set with input from Denise and John and Andy and the team, a set of the questions that we have received to date. And I'm not going to read all of these, kind of like I just did those points, but I want to highlight them so that Board members can come back to them, should you be interested in doing so. One question we've gotten, "Why would implementation of the new model increase or decrease funding for some schools more than others, even if you have a similar number of students?" And the short answer there is it's the demographics of the students, that is the starting point, for the funding impact that's going to happen to you, that's going to occur between the current model and the next model. And we are working very hard to be attentive to those differences between schools. It is, however, important to ask first, "Do the schools have enough to offer a high-quality educational program for the students they serve, more than are they increasing or decreasing more than other schools?" I would argue that the adequacy of funding for the program in each school is our first priority, not who's going up or who's going down more than someone else, because funding streams are tied to student needs and demographics, and those are very different across our schools. Second question, "Why would some Title I schools experience decreases in funding while some non-Title I schools would experience increases under the balanced budget model?" And as you can see from the answer there, under the current model, we've concentrated that Title I funding in a relatively small number of schools. And we're proposing expanding that to provide those resources to more schools, including our secondary schools. The decreases that are happening there are very much tied to the fact that, as I said a moment ago, those schools had a combination of compensatory title funding and even achievement integration funding. Some schools that have had, not Title I schools, and have had fewer students who generate those compensatory dollars, would see an increase, but it's mostly that inflationary increase. And so just to put it really bluntly, this is not a system in which our affluent schools would get a large increase at the expense of our schools that serve higher-poverty populations. If you just look at the dollar signs comparing the current state to the next state, you might reach that conclusion, but there's not a one-to-one shift. Would the positions in the school-managed category of the balanced budget model be allocated as FTE? And would we continue to utilize partial FTEs? And the finance team has said that at present, the plan is to continue to allocate partial FTEs, even though at times that can get complex and be challenging for both finance folks and even the individual employees in those positions to manage. It allows us to meet multiple needs across complex situations. Will we allocate positions based on the average cost, as the current practice, or based on the actual cost? This is an issue that Rochester is not alone in having grappled with. Were we to charge a second-year teacher salary and benefits to a school at the actual rate, it would be very different than a 20-year teacher to a school. There's some argument for doing that insofar as you are putting the actual costs at the site level. We are not recommending that, however, for a number of reasons, including the fact that we don't want to create a disincentive for schools to be staffing people who are more experienced. We think there's incredible benefits to that. We also, of course, have to and want to meet all tenure obligations to all staff across the district. And so in the end, even though this proposal puts a lot of emphasis on the school level, we're all one district, and all of those commitments need to be met across the full district. Question about how would compensatory education aid be allocated across the model? The state largely determines the allocation of those dollars, but they do give school districts the opportunity to take 20% of those dollars off and use them for authorized purposes at the central level. That's what we do today. In order to maximize funding for the site level, we're proposing to take that to 100%. And that is one of the sources of increased funding for some of our schools in this model. Number six, how would a school that receives no title funding and little compensatory funding benefit from this new model? The core answer there is flexibility. They would not be seeing significant increases in funding, although there potentially are some, depending on the school, but they would have greater flexibility, ranging from 25 to 35% of their total budget, roughly would be in that school-managed category, giving them the resources to shape an educational program that could be more tailored to the needs of their students. Inflation has been on many people's minds in recent months, and so a question that we had, how And so, a question that we had, "How would the model anticipate inflation?" And right now, we've built in a 3% increase in all costs. Of course, figuring out the inflation rate is an ongoing challenge and John and the team work to do that every year when they build the budget. But the budget model that we would build this out for you to consider in June would set it at 3% in our current thinking. Eight, how would PTEC and CTEC? Would PTEC and CTEC receive the categorical funding? And the short answer to that is no. Those dollars accrue to the high schools where those students are enrolled. But, PTEC and CTEC are in that centrally funded bucket of the model. And so, they would be funded directly through central resources, as they currently are. Number nine, could positions that don't currently exist in RPS be created under the model? The short answer to that is they could and should be, but it should be sparingly and in a very disciplined fashion. Because while part of the purpose, well, the main purpose of this shift is to allocate resources tied to student needs with greater flexibility at the site level while still ensuring a common educational program across the district, we don't want a runaway train of adding positions in the school district. And so, we will need to have a really clear and thoughtful process for the creation of new positions and ensure that not only are they funded, but that they're also not duplicative of roles that could be met in other ways without creating new positions. Number 10, we are in the home stretch. Elementary school counselors, where are they in the model? In reviewing the commitments we made on the referendum, where we said we would use referendum dollars to fund slightly more than $5 million for school counselors, it became clear to us that the first version of this model, which only included middle and high schools in the district counselors in the district required, would not ensure that we could meet that referendum commitment. And so, for that reason, we've moved, in the most recent version, elementary counselors into the district required. So, we would have K through 12, school counselors would be in that required bucket. Question came in also about the training we're doing. Core training is one of the several approved types of training that the state of Minnesota has authorized to help teachers and other educators implement the REED Act. We had from one of our principals, a question, "Would the training that's now underway be funded through the balanced budget model?" And in fact, we have allocated resources to fund the full implementation of the core training through the end of the next school year from other funding sources. And so, we are covered in that regard. The model will have to fund future investments in professional development in all subject areas, as we talked about a moment ago. We are thinking through the exact right balance between the school level and central office level decision-making about that. If reductions are made to the general fund budgets of high schools to adjust for students who take classes through PSEO at PTEC and CTEC, will that discourage students from taking those classes? It is possible that there would be some shift in how our high schools see PSEO, PTEC, and CTEC if there is some reallocation of funding based on the student decisions. But I don't think there's any possibility in which we would see a wholesale reversal of the fact that it's good for kids to experience post-secondary education. I also think that as part of our next strategic plan, we have some deep work to do on the role of PSEO and other college-level classes in our high schools and making sure that kids are taking the right classes that really advance their long-term goals and priorities and are not taking it only because it has a college credit attached. So, I'm confident that we would still see the large numbers and the increasingly diverse numbers of kids taking those classes. But we simply can't hold the high schools harmless because we don't have the funding to do it at the level that would require. So, you see here again, the timeline that we are on. We are there at the 10th of December in this important study session. We have our colleagues from Afton Partners who are here. We will begin working, literally starting tomorrow, on version three that is going to be based on the feedback that I have partly summarized for you here, of which we've also received more. We will then be opening up an opportunity for a broader group of staff to receive it. I will say, we've recently received from some of our principals concerns about seeking that feedback next week, right before the holiday. I get that. People's minds are not necessarily on long-term budget model design issues and there is limited time before the holiday to dialogue about these issues. That said, we really do want to keep this train moving so you can make a decision on January 7th. And so, I would say on balance, we'll still be going out, seeking feedback from broader staff, which we would then incorporate into the next version of the model. And then, we are headed for that January 7th vote, we hope, on what will then be version four of the model. And in the board meeting after that, we would be asking for your direction on parameters for the development of the 2025-2026 budget, potentially based on this model if you approve it. And if not, likely based on our current budget and staffing model. So, madam chair, that was a ton of me talking about fairly dry content. I'm going to try my best to make sure that Andy and John and other colleagues are able to join in the discussion that I know will happen now, but I'm sure I will be jumping in at key points as well. And I hope that that gives the board some summary of some of the feedback and questions we've gotten to date.
All right. Board members, any questions of your own or comments on what you've heard tonight? Dr. Marvin.
This is really good and I'm really heartened both by the specificity that you've provided here as well as the design issues and the consideration. I think it's a really thoughtful list of issues that need to be considered. And I'm not surprised, but really impressed that the thinking has gone so deep to consider what we still need to work on. One question, when, during December 16th through the 20th, staff have an opportunity to review and provide feedback on the third version, what's that opportunity going to look like? I mean, how's that going to work?
Thank you, Dr. Marvin. The current plan is for a video, unfortunately featuring me with slides, that I've offered to have somebody else do it and nobody's signed up, that provides a concise summary of the whole model, kind of back to what we did with you the first meeting, but an updated version. And then, a written summary that Mom Sue Knutts and our communications director will be pulling together that is a concise summary of what the model would do. And then, a feedback form that staff can go into where they will be invited to provide text responses to the same questions that we posed to our community budget committee last night. What do you see as the strengths? What do you see as the concerns? What are your questions? What are your suggestions? And that's the same questions we posed to our administrators that led to the feedback we've gotten. And then, what we will do and our research director, Dr. Ruck, will take the lead on this, is that we'll synthesize that, which of course, it's not just Peter's brain doing it. We do use AI to do that, which is pretty extraordinary how it synthesizes that. And then, we would use that in preparing the model you'd see in January. You know, the other possibility is to try and host, like we did with administrators, online forums and discussion groups, or like we did with the community budget group. But I think both the number of staff, because this will go out to all staff, and then the time of year and the timeline could make that kind of a disingenuous, you know, source of feedback where we would listen, I'm sure we'd learn some things, but hopefully, this written feedback opportunity will give people a really clear chance to say, "This is the thing I'm concerned about," or "This is what I'm excited about." And then, we'll, as we did with the administrators, we shared that all with you and we will share this with you minus any comments that can be identified personally, identify people personally. Other than that, we'll share that feedback with the board and with the community as well when we come back to you in January.
Director Workman.
Yeah, on slide three, which references the current budget model versus the balanced budget. Number seven, on high schools experiencing modest reductions, you said, it's not printed here, but you said that you would be thinking maybe five or six or seven positions? Is that per school or total?
That was per school, but if, and I'm just going to say, John and Andy jump in, either if, correct me if I'm wrong or something, when we looked at it, it would be about five or six, the equivalent of five or six FTE in terms of the dollars. Again, they would have more than that in additional funding to be able to essentially fill that gap. One question, Director Workman would like to, "Well then, why do it? Why, if you can cover the dollars, why make this change?" We're trying to build a system here that can exist for the long term and flex as student decisions change and educational decisions change. So, we need to get our PSEO funding in a sustainable place where we are not paying the high school as though the kid is sitting in an 11th grade class at Century or John Marshall or Mayo and paying for them at CTEC or PSEO. And so, while our high schools next year would be able to cover that cost of those five positions from other sources, if, as I think is easy to foresee, our PSEO numbers continue to grow, we do have to have a way to cover those costs on an ongoing basis because we simply can't afford to pay twice for
No, I get that.
When somebody's not getting instruction in two places. So, that would be why we'd be making basically a system change that high schools would have the resources to bridge. And that's where that question, which was a very perceptive question, well, could this create a disincentive for high schools to encourage kids to take those classes over time? And it would be dishonest to say that that's not a possible outcome, but I have no doubt that it will still be a priority. It just might be one that high schools approach with somewhat greater scrutiny as they're helping kids choose classes, knowing that it is going to influence the funding that they have to build their educational programs.
Director Cook.
A couple of questions. One is really detailed and, but I'm just having a hard time understanding what the decision space is going to look like for these principals because you mentioned that resources for the school managed category would be allocated as FTEs, which are related in some way to the average costs of those positions. But the positions within the school managed category would seem to have pretty different average costs for the typical, so I'm just wondering like what this menu of choices looks like for a school principal? They get, say, an allocation of one assistant school principal with, and that, you know, how does that compare to the allocation of elementary education teachers or reading specialists or any of the other? I just, I don't understand that framework.
Let me invite Andy or John to jump in. Let me say, in most instances in the first years of this model, Director Cook, I think it will be, we are staffing this position rather than that position at a relatively small number of similar costs. That's my prediction. So, this is a position that we have, maybe there was a retirement, maybe it's not meeting this need, and we're going to add another position that is largely equivalent. I think over time, you might see people saying, "Well, there is this position, but instead, we'd like two educational support positions." And so, we start, and then, I think even further, you might see people, some of these positions, while valuable, we would rather put into lowering class size at a, in a grade level. And so, now, we're actually shifting and we're actually supplementing that educational program with lower class size with that 25 to 35%. But I think my prediction is, in the early years, it would mostly be kind of a position to position, I think the term might almost be swap, but that's a prediction. What would you say about how the system would really work?
The process itself, as we are envisioning it right now, throughout the tool, out of view, is that there will be a number of essentially buckets, we would call them, that how is the dollars assigned to them in the various funding sources? And as they select either a position or some other expense category, non-personnel expense, if there's something they want to fund, if it's a personnel expense, it would be based on an average salary for that job type. So, that, we are looking at the averages, but we're looking at a small subset to try to create the best average that we can find as opposed to a broad range of averages because we know within the district, there's averages, you know, there's salaries, you know, we have a very broad salary range. So, a principal would walk, literally walk through this process. We anticipate some support in this as well, but work with our team to understand, one, the model, how does it work, what they can and can't do based on the principals and guidelines surrounding it. But then, as they get into the tool, all of the positions that are part of district required will just be allocated. They'll be sitting there and they'll know what those are. Those that are going to be school managed, they would, again, they would select these particular uses. And as they select a use, that pot of money will decrease in terms of its available funding source until the point where they get to zero or they have nothing left. That is the tool that we have and the way that it would work. What we need to do is make sure they're making those choices appropriately, but that, those choices will be, will be helped by policy that says, "Within this funding source, you can do this. Within this funding source, you can do, you know, this." So, there, it won't be just a wide open. There'll still be some parameters to make sure they're staying within the funding use guidelines that we often have, that are often statutorily established. Then, the process of approval will then take place that Dr. Pikel mentioned previously of how will those decisions then move up to then ultimately be approved to make sure they align with the skip, for example, and other district-wide expectations.
Will the principals, when the principals are making the decision, will they have those values of the average cost for a position so that they know
Yes.
If I'm buying this position, it's costing you this much from my expenditure bucket?
I would expect that we will provide some of that, we will provide that in advance, but the tool actually looks in real time and looks for an existing position like that and says, "Oh, okay, I have a number of positions like that. Here is the average salary and benefits." And so, it will assign it in real time because we have actual salaries in there today.
So, it's based on our actual salary and benefit data?
That is correct. Either way, it would be whether we provide it in real time or we just do the calculations based on what we know today. We even know within the teacher group, for example, there's a broad range of salaries. So, we're thinking about more at a position level, making some, making the averages such that social workers might be an average, school psychologists might be an average, a grade, you know, grade K through, or five may be an average, as opposed to just a broad range of here, your teacher average, which isn't necessarily always as accurate as we'd like to see it. If I could just say one final thing, this was, this was actually the feedback we received from principals that we, it would be, it would have been my preference that we actually have principals' budget on real dollars. So, as they select something, they know exactly what that is going to cost. But as we, as we realized that and received the feedback from the principals, is one of those things that we pivoted and said, "You know, it really makes sense to just look at averages." Because we have a contingency on the backside to protect ourselves if for, if for some reason, we're a little bit heavy based on an average in a particular job category, for example. So, that was one of those, that was one of those moments where we took that feedback and said, "Yeah, that makes a lot of sense. Let's do it that way instead."
Well, and you have to think about, the reality is, you're going to have some schools that just, that have more senior teachers
Right.
That cost more. And then, other schools that have really, they're newer teachers and the individual teachers cost less. But those schools that have the more senior teachers, if you go strictly based on like a set dollar amount without looking at like, "We need these actual positions and all of that," they could potentially really be hurt by it, right? And it's tricky, I've been in systems where it's been all FTE on averages. I was in one system where we did both. And we played the system. You put your most expensive people that were counted by averages and then you put your cheapest people in the buckets that were dollar for dollar because you wanted, but ultimately, it was the same pot of money. Like, that was a silly, so.
They, in that situation, there was this belief that I could get more because I know that when it comes to an FTE, I'm going to get that number of bodies or people. But when it comes to this pot of money that I now get to spend, if my expenses going against that are lower, I can get more. So, it's a psychological, and that actually was some of the feedback that we got from principals, is some of that shifting could take place. And we also want to make this, we know that the transition is going to be, there will be some difficulty. I don't know if that's a little bit strong perhaps, but it's going to be a challenge to get this implemented flawlessly. We know we're going to have obstacles to overcome as we do this, including just the amount of time that principals already have committed. And now, they have to carve out some more time for this. We're trying to make it easy. So, this was another way to make it just a little bit easier. And we know, we believe that we're protecting, again, we're protecting ourselves in terms of ensuring we don't go over what we know we can spend by holding back some dollars. And our team at Afton helped us develop that process of, or that, that plan about how much money would we hold back from flexible to ensure much money would we hold back from flexible to ensure that we don't overspend.
That's another one.
I, I did, that's all really helpful and makes a lot of sense to me. So thank you for clarifying that. The other thing I'm wondering about here is about the central office functions because we talked about how the compensatory aid, where previously 20% had kind of gone to the central office, no longer would, and similarly for Title I funding, and also talked about some important responsibilities that we want central office to take on about routine curricular, curriculum review and adoption and associated professional development and so forth, perhaps playgrounds. So I, I'm just, I'm not seeing how those two things can sit together in the same world. So how does that work?
Let me answer in broad brush terms and then, you know, Andy or John, Mona, others may want to jump in. When we set out with the most basic design of this system, the core impetus for which I claim responsibility, I hope eventually it's credit, which was this idea of keeping the educational program constant and having the flexibility be in that learning support piece, then there was the question of how to handle central office. And as I mentioned, I think we do still have some conceptual work to do on that before we bring you a final vote. But the core starting point was we should spend the same amount, same percentage of our dollars on central office in this model as we do today. We shouldn't grow the central office. And the logic of that was, as you, I know, will recall from the referendum, we're just at about the average for administrative costs, a little bit lower in the state. I did not see a scenario in which I wanted to recommend to this board or that I saw you approving a significant increase in our central cost beyond that, given that the dollars are most impactfully at the site level. And so we are working with an inflation-adjusted total pot that is similar to where we are now, but within that we do have some important work to do in, in allocating the resources within those departments. And the biggest pressure point, which very interestingly, this week or last week when the state of Minnesota announced a potential deficit on the horizon, they identified K-12 special education funding as the explicit, one of two explicit drivers of that deficit. I've never heard them do that from the state before. They explicitly said it's K-12 special ed increases that are driving Minnesota's deficit. Well, we face the same challenge in that central budget. So the hardest single problem that's there is meeting the needs of our IEPs, which we're committed to do, and keeping that central cost at the proportion that we have designed in this system. So that's kind of the core, big picture logic. The, the theory of action was that we centrally have to live within our means in this model, and then we have some work to do in operationalizing the resources. The alternative, because there is no new, no unforeseen money, would have been taking more from the school managed and the district acquired in the school and pulling it up centrally. So that's kind of where we are right now. Are there things, John or Andy, that you'd add to that, the core premise of where we were?
I don't, I was just trying to look and see what, Andy, do you know off the top of your head what we were taking and doing with the 20% off the top?
I was going to add that.
Okay.
Almost all of that 20% went back to the schools. It's just that we used it-
Were you talking about compensatory?
Of compensatory. Of the 20% that we retained previously, it was social workers and school counselors. In one year it was social workers, another year it was school counselors, but it was those sort, support positions. And, and I can't speak to the history, maybe John can, of why we retained 20%, but the fact of the matter of those positions went back into the schools anyway. So now, now they will just have the ability to make those decisions on 100% of their dollars as opposed to just 80% of those dollars. So I don't know historically why it was an 80/20 split, though that was before me.
And that's a specific answer for the compensatory.
That's for a compensatory, yeah.
And that's a really important one. I think there are a number of other issues, Director Cook, that are strategic investment concerns that are not fully accounted for in this model, but there are limited dollars right now. And I think some of those are things we need to grapple with. My, my best answer to how we resource those needs is we get enrollment growing. And of course, enrollment does bring increasing costs, but if we are efficient and growing enrollment opens the opportunity for the kinds of investments in educational models, technology, student supports, that is a complete game changer because then we're a growing system and those resources are there as long as we are being really efficient in staffing and operations. I think, as we've talked about often, in Rochester, there's every prospect of that happening if we are doing what we need to do to be the educational provider of choice.
Okay, that's all really helpful context. I mostly just wanted to check that there wasn't sort of an implicit assumption that there was going to be a lot of efficiencies identified or, or, you know, reductions identified at the central office level? And of course, if there's any opportunity for efficiency, I'm ready for it, but I was just checking whether that was something that was, some of these other things were reliant on that. It sounds like not, but-
Not with the total cost.
That's really helpful context.
I mean, one of the things I look forward to in this, in this model is being able to, I couldn't do it off the top of my head right now today, but when we get to the final model, one of the things, and we've talked about it often at this board table, there's an inherent skepticism in any organization of the people downtown, the people in central office, you know, whether you're in a company, what do the people at corporate headquarters do, or in a school district, what does the central office do? And some of that's just human nature, it's productive. I've always thought I wanted to work in a district that could very clearly tell a principal, a teacher, a parent, the cost and value added of central office. Like, here's what we cost, and here's the value we add, with real clarity. So there's always the thought, they must have money down there, you know, there must be some, that, well, this board knows there's not. But like, to be able to say, no, in our model, this is what our, you know, and central office, of course, is a huge term. The thing that creates the most, you know, tension is administration within that because I don't think anyone says we don't need some special ed teachers who are being paid centrally, but people wonder if we need superintendents and things like that in the same way.
Oh, yeah, we do.
So, but I think that this model holds up the prospect of being able to say, in Rochester Public Schools, this is the, the cost of our central office, and then we can tell you, and here's the contributions we make to the education of, of kids in a more rigorous way than, than I could right now, not just off the top of my head, but even if you asked me to write a memo on it, I wouldn't have a system for saying it. I could tell you what it costs this year, but not in a design model, so.
If I could just expand on that, like the attachment we gave, the very detailed attachment that Andy worked on on Sunday and Monday, that's the first time I think we've clearly said, this is the FTE in the central office bucket. I mean, we've tried to show the Edison Building, the TSSC Building on some of our FTE reports. I think this is the clearest we've ever laid it out, that there's 232 jobs in the central office doing supports and administering the district. That means there's 2,300 FTE out in our schools doing the work in the buildings. So I really like how that chart actually kind of confirms what I thought is that most of our resources are getting applied into the schools.
So I wanted to ask some questions, speaking of those categories. In the centrally managed bucket, we have CTEC and PTEC listed, and I just wanted to clarify, are those the costs of any teacher who would be teaching a class at CTEC and PTEC in addition to the, what I must estimate would be supply costs and equipment costs that are related to those? So those categories of teachers would not be in, for example, the, the general ed district required?
Those are, those are the specific program in its entirety, CTEC, PTEC, Quarry Hill, all of that falls within that program. So principals, ESPs, every position and every-
Not just teachers, but every, everything that goes to-
Everything for that program is lumped together there. That's correct.
Okay. And did you get an answer to why we subteachers were in both?
Well, there's, there's a ver-
No, Madam Chair, because I ran out of time to ask Andy that question after you asked me it. And so, Andy, why are we subteachers in both of the, the school managed and the centrally managed support?
Because there is a, there's a component of it for the special education, and that's what falls under the centrally managed because centrally managed is our special education So, and, and I think that's the other thing that as you look at the detail, and I said this to our seatback group last night, a position is not necessarily exclusive to one of the four categories because although we didn't lay it out, it was, it was a, it was a great point that you could, for example, have additional grade one teachers in school manage because that principal chose to, to have lower class sizes in grade one, for example. So positions, positions are not exclusive to a particular category. Many of them are, of course, but not all.
Director Barlow?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. First one deals with, do compensatory and Title I dollars follow the students? I guess I want to be clear on that, they follow the students, correct?
Yeah, they do. The, the compensatory formula is more straightforward than the federal title formula where there are essentially thresholds of percentages of kids in a school that shape how the dollars can flow, whereas the compensatory, it follows each kid, and then there's a concentration factor based on the percentage of kids in the school who meet the criteria. So if you're 10% free and reduced, all those students, the dollars they generate go to the school that's 10%. If you're 80% free and reduced, that school also gets the dollars those kids generate, and they get a multiplier for having a higher concentration of poverty. But yes, both follow the students with some different rules for exactly how the math works.
Thank you. And then, under the design issues, number one, training and support, I was curious about, is there a target date? I know you're, not you, but the goal is to have all principals achieve a certain level of proficiency, expertise, if you will. Is there a target date for that? We have a process that is calling for benchmarks to be met, and so beyond a target date, not that I need to know, well, it's, you know, how then will, are there provisions in place or under consideration to help assist or assure that principals are able to meet that standard? And even though we're talking about the balanced budget model, are there any thoughts as to what might occur if indeed a principal or several principals are not able to?
Director Barlow, it's a, it's a critical question. We actually just submitted a grant proposal that unfortunately was not funded to exactly study how, what we're going to do is going to work, but we're going to do it anyway. The current thinking, and I don't mean to say to Dan and his colleagues at Afton that this is a done deal because this board needs to make a decision on this model, but if you decide to move in this model, we have received a very thoughtful proposal for a follow-on scope of consulting work from Dan and Kevin and the folks at Afton. And that consulting work this winter and spring would have two key purposes. One, they would work individually with principals to build their mo, build their budget in this model during this winter and spring for the '25, '26 school year. So it'd be direct coaching. The second piece is that Andy's team will be there for all of that so that we can do that on our own beyond the current school year because they have a ton of experience in that. And so we would, in future years, be essentially building resource allocation into our leadership development process that Eric Johnson leads, and that, that the Office of Finance on an ongoing basis, when we have both new leaders and then leaders who get support, we would be doing it internally, but that Afton would be helping us build that out this winter and spring, if you vote for the model.
Right. And then finally, in past sessions, we've talked about how, what opportunities staff may have, and certainly I see the schedule that staff will be given opportunity. But are there any design built-ins to allow parent and/or slash student input regarding the considerations of how their schools might look different, what services might currently be provided but potentially tweaked a bit or moved to different site locations?
It's a wonderful question, Director Barlow. There's, there's two as, there's one aspect that I think I am certain I will recommend to you, and one that I've heard feedback on two sides about. The certain is that the feedback, the needs analysis, the needs assessment to develop our school continuous improvement plans, the new skips, must include robust student and parent feedback. So we know the needs assessment has to include that, and we actually are digging deep into what survey tools should we use to get quantitative data, but it should also include other things like the work Sarah Louise Henry is doing with our student school board and things like that. So for sure, in the needs assessment, the point of some discussion is should parents and potentially for like high school students be on the school improvement team? Should they actually have structured positions on the team? In that they're voting members and that there's a parent slot, a parent guardian, and then potentially a youth? I've heard some real positives from that, including from some of our PTA representatives last week, and I've heard some real concerns about it because, of course, these are, as you know, complex things that some of us spend years trying to get up to speed. So that question of the parent and caregiver and maybe youth participation on the teams, I would say I certainly would never prohibit that. If you had a school that wanted to have a parent, and you had a parent that wanted to serve, or a student, I, I would be quite enthused about it, and I certainly would think the school should have the latitude to do that. The question is, do we want to have that as a design feature that there needs to be? But certainly, the needs assessment has to. And even if we didn't want to do that, which we do, the fact that our new school improvement process is now going to be merged with the Title I planning process, which is federally required, that requires the parent involvement component. So in order to make the shift with Title I that I'm proposing, that many more of our schools will receive that federal funding, and that the Title I planning process, which is currently separate from our skip process, will be merged, we know they have to be in the needs assessment, but maybe they should be on the team as well. So that's something that we probably won't raise for deep feedback until early in the new year because it's not a centrally financial issue, but we do need to raise it early in the new year because we need to begin to put this new process in motion.
Thank you.
On that same note, when you talked about the, looking at the additional data that you needed for the needs assessment, when I think about how you've described the school managed category and that the allocations are going to be made on what the student population needs, what do you see as our big gaps in available data that principals will need to make that decision? I mean, we have our student assessment data, we have our panorama, but what, from either what Afton Partners has seen in other districts, or what, what you've seen, is there a, is there a data set that is, has been helpful in this kind of model that we just don't have?
Thank you, Chair Nathan. I think the short answer is we actually ironically need less data than we have. As you know, we have 33 indicators right now in our district dashboard, and in retrospect, that's way too many. It's too many for any one person to necessarily track, but more than that, it's too many to build true, what's called, early indicator systems around. Because what you don't want is just did the patient live or die, you want the diagnostic tests along the way that tell you. Now, we've begun that with our FastBridge assessments. One of the problems with using FastBridge at, like an MCA score, is that it's not intended to truly tell the kid's reading level at a deep level. It's intended to be a dipstick to see if the student needs an intervention. In Minnesota, because the READ Act required everyone to use a tool like that for screening and then to report it to parents, it's starting to get confused with a summative assessment that would be assessing like a large body of skill. What you want is both. You want- You want some aligned assessment, aligned indicators tied to a limited number of summative assessments. So, an MCA score and a FastBridge score are an example of that on the assessment side. Another example is a graduation rate and a course failure rate. We know when a kid doesn't earn a credit in a ninth grade class, it's predictive of potentially significant problems down the road. And just a few zeros can encourage a student who otherwise could do the work to disengage, you know, from learning. And so, course failure rates are a really good dipstick or canary in the coal mine on the way to a grade-to-grade promotion rate, which is how many of your ninth graders make it to 10th grade, and then how many of those cross the stage. So, what we're going to need is those limited number of those summative measures, a tight set of performance measures, and then this is what I think could make the system really innovative. We have to track the money to those formative indicators, to those performance indicators. How are we allocating our dollars to literacy interventions tied to the FastBridge score, for instance, or dropout prevention interventions tied to the course failure rates and interventions? It doesn't mean that that number drives everything in the budget, but we're using that data to say, wow, we are losing, of the kids who don't graduate in this school, we lose most of them in the summer between 9th and 10th grade. What are we going to do with interventions at that point? Because that's our pressure point that we're seeing. And so, we really need to allocate those dollars there as opposed to 11th and 12th grade, because even though we do have some kids who don't finish, even though they're close, we lose most of our students at this particular point. So, that's kind of the sweet spot that we're aiming for.
A smaller grid.
A much smaller grid.
Board members, any other questions? This will not be the last time we talk about this. Anything else, Superintendent?
No, I just want to, not only, of course, we've, you know, had Kevin and Dan listening, but in particular to Andy and John. John mentioned Andy working on a Sunday. I don't think either of them enjoyed the Vikings game on Sunday because, even though they won, because I was texting them through the whole thing. But I apologize for that, but not really. We're doing really important work. We're doing important work here and we are, we are, we are close to, leaving aside the decision that the board may make about this proposal, I'm increasingly confident we're going to have a very good one for them to consider. And so, there's a lot of moving pieces to that. And there's a large team. I know Chad was back behind me here and Denise is out of town this week, and so, it's a good group that's pulling all this together and I'm really grateful for that.
Thank you. He'll hear that about five minutes.
Thanks, everyone, for having us.
Bye.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is the review of the school board handbook. So, board members, we committed to reviewing the school board handbook annually and since the handbook was approved last December, MSBA has published a school board handbook template, and it was based on best practices for process and information sharing. So, what we did is compare the current RPS handbook to the MSBA template, and the draft Google Doc version of the handbook is available on Symbly. I just wanted to highlight what some of the major changes were and then some of the other areas of the MSBA template that I wanted to offer for sort of separate consideration. You'll have a chance to send in your questions and comments before the next meeting on the 17th with the hope that we will take action on it on January 7th. So, for the most part, the, I think we should be proud that our school board handbook had most of the components of what was in the MSBA model handbook. The first section you see is going to require updates to our change in board members and our change in our assistant school board clerk. We also just did some modifications of the about Rochester Public Schools section on page four and five, more to group information together on student demographics and the history of the district. So, no changes there from the model school board handbook. And now, I'm looking on page seven about the Rochester School Board. The MSBA template had some additional helpful information that we separated out on eligibility requirements and terms of office, when and how a new school board member takes the office, school board vacancies, a little more detail about how we set our compensation. And then, the section on school board duties and responsibilities were reorganized to focus first on the duties of an individual board member with some additional language from MSBA. And we added a section on conflicts of interest. And then, we added a section or separated out the sections on responsibility of the school board as a whole where we had written a narrative about how our school board year looks and the major decision areas that we make. So, there was no changes in that section from MSBA, just a reorganization of some of the concepts. And now, on page 13, we reorganized this section to match a little bit more of the structure of the MSBA template, starting by describing the types of school board meetings and talking about open meeting law. And then, we added information about the role of the presiding officer, some additional information on quorum in the voting section. We added some background on how we talk to each other or how we address each other at the school board meeting in terms of saying Director Marvin or Superintendent Pecel because we've had some comments from people that they found that interesting that we did that. So, I want to make sure people are comfortable with that. How presenters usually begin their presentations to us by recognizing the chair and the board and the superintendent. And we added a specific paragraph about the superintendent's role in board meetings so that those who might be new to our process understand the active role that the superintendent plays in the board meetings. And now, moving on to page 17, we added information about where our school board meetings are held. Not everybody might know that if they're not familiar with our process. And not any changes in other district communications or school board committees, not any changes in school board professional development. We moved the section on expectations for school board service to the school board duties and responsibilities section. And then, there's two items that we re-titled board communication and engagement. They've been in our school board handbook before, but there is an entire section in the MSBA template that I'm going to share with board members before next week's meeting. I don't know that I think we would recommend putting it in our handbook, but it's a whole, it's a whole set of information that lays out how board members can and might consider communicating with various stakeholders and various groups internal to the district and external to the district. A number of other districts include that in their school board handbook, but I wanted to send it to you for consideration, maybe as an additional document that we could have that kind of reflects what our protocol is or what our experience is. We can talk about that at the next meeting. And then, the other three sections, the role of the superintendent and the bargaining units and the definitions and acronyms, there haven't been any updates to those yet. We're going to double check that before the end. And then, we have been using the checklist for first steps after election to the school board to onboard our new school board member who'll be joining us in January, and we may make modifications to that based on how well that process works this time. So, given that overview, is there any glaring area that you think was missed? As I said, you'll have the opportunity to review this. We'll have more of a discussion next week, but happy to entertain any of those now. All right. If not, we'll talk about it again December 17th. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is my favorite prep for action item, the ABCD proposal for 2025. So, I don't think I need to give the board any background, but this is our document to track and schedule our school board agenda items over the year. The superintendent and Ms. Sam have created a draft based on the work that we've done before, based on a comparison to our requirements and policy, based on the priorities of the superintendent regarding the key initiatives this year and what priorities for our decision-making related to those key initiatives are. There is a document in the Symbly called the Board Guide to the Draft ABCD 2025 that we're going to use to go through this. We are not going to go meeting through meeting and line by line on every agenda item, but I created this board guide as an overview of what our year is going to look like and some of the key decisions that we made. So, the first item are the dates of our 2025 meetings. We're keeping the same pattern of two regular meetings per month, but there's three months that will only have one regular meeting per month because of restrictions or holidays. Instead of the 10 study sessions we have scheduled for this year, we're going down to five. Superintendent felt that we could cover the information that we needed and the kinds of conversations we're having tonight in five. So, that sort of lessens, I think, the burden for all of us. At all meeting times, we'll start with, at 5:30 with the two exceptions of our national night out in August and our tooth and taxation in December that starts at 6 o'clock PM. We will take a vote on those dates formally at the January 7th meeting. So, the ABCD draft that we will take action on January 7th, there is a set of consent and standing agenda items that will occur at most every meeting or monthly at a meeting. And you're familiar with the human resource actions, our minutes, our board committee updates, our financial reporting, and we will add additional items if they meet the consent agenda requirements, our expenditure items for greater than $175,000, policy and procedure updates, and prep for action and action, our recognitions, and we are working on a new approach for student activities and athletics recognitions for 2025. So, stay tuned. And then, the rest of this document identifies the agenda items by our major categories of work, if you will. So, we have all of our important items that we're taking care of at the first meeting in January, and then we will be talking about our legislative priorities at our study session and then our regular meeting in January. And then, we have the list of the agenda items that are related to key initiatives for the district for the strategic plan. And I've tried to group them together, no, I'm sorry, I put them in date order from the beginning of the year to the end of the year. But you'll see there's multiple items on our mission, vision, values, process, and then our brand, tagline, and logo, information on the skip process, our literacy curriculum, the middle school ALC update, SAC expansion, our world languages plan, extracurricular activities. We'll have one, two, three, four meetings on a new profile of a graduate, deeper learning, our newcomers program, our K-5 science curriculum, and a philanthropy strategy. Anything you want to say about any of those, Superintendent?
No, just that all of the ones that culminate in a board decision are spaced with enough time, to some extent unlike the rethinking funding work we're doing now, as John and I were talking about yesterday, to give us time to do analysis and stakeholder feedback between the decision points, and they all eventually lead up to a prep for action and an action. So, that is true of our work on the new vision, mission, values, brand, tagline. It's true on the very important work we'll have on the profile of a graduate and a number of other things. The things that are singletons there are things that I felt were really of very high level of importance or like the extracurricular activities update. Well, I think that's important, too, but they're things board members have asked for. So, I tried to keep a running list of issues that you've asked to see on the agenda and haven't necessarily had a time. There were also a number of instances where I added something like the newcomers programming where we haven't brought you a detailed update, but I know you're concerned about it, you get emails about it. So, that was the logic of those things that are there. And really, in many ways, this whole winter and spring is a run-up to the kickoff in the summer of the development of the next strategic plan.
And speaking of, that is a section where all the meetings are identified, starting in July with a decision anticipated on the 2026, 2028 strategic plan by the board in December of 2025. The facilities include our usual review and approval of the long-term facilities maintenance plan, but I also included one of the key initiative agenda items, which is a broader discussion of facilities recommendations that will lead into, well, affect probably the long-term facilities maintenance plan and other decisions we may need to make about facilities. I have a section on data and outcomes, and the topics of these will look familiar to you. However, what we've added for most of them is an initiatives update. So, for each of these agenda items, we won't just be seeing the data. We'll also be seeing a summary of what the initiatives are that the district is undertaking to address whatever the data is that we're, that we're talking about, very similar to what we saw in the achievement and integration plan report where we saw the data and then there was a summary of what the district was actually doing to impact the goals or the outcomes or the measures that we're describing. Budget and finance, this is our cycle of forecasts and parameters and budget draft reviews and tax levies that all feed into our budget cycle for 2025, 26, and then at the end of the year for 2026, 27. The next two items are the superintendent evaluation and goals and the school board evaluation and goals. The proposal on the superintendent evaluation is that we will have a single superintendent evaluation this year unlike what we're, we'll be doing later tonight, the second half of the superintendent's evaluation. And we will still be able to make a decision as to whether the board wants to undertake a school board self-evaluation instrument in July, but we have the placeholder there at least for us to complete our goal review and our goal setting for the next year. There's another document that's in Symbly that is a chart that we've used over the years to map what is required in policy with what board actions are required. So, either a review or a approval or a vote. And we've gone to double check to make sure that all of the items that are required in policy have found a place on the ABCD. And I have to say, I think we are really pleased to see that this process, I think, what did we say? There were five items that maybe we didn't find and that we were able to add to the calendar out of a 14-page document. So, I think that says a lot for us for being very compliant with our requirements and policy. And these are things that you're familiar with, but we are going to have a discussion of religious holidays in the 2026, 27 school calendar before we discuss our school calendar. Our APEC meetings that we usually have are included, and then our staff development plan, student employee handbook, and course registration guide reviews. We have two meetings set for the school resource officer contract. You'll remember that we have to take no action. If we take no action, then the contract renews, but we had decided in the past few years that we wanted to have a specific agenda item to have that discussion, so that's been included. And then, we have other annual agenda items, our Cradle II Career Partnership, our Rochester Public School Foundation Partnership. We've added an item for retiree recognition to try to do something more intentional and formal at a public meeting about our retirees, and then our annual back-to-school update. Any questions?
And there went another year.
There's another year. Now, we're done.
It's ambitious.
It's ambitious. But, and I think I, for the benefit of anybody, anybody who may be watching or for the press that's here, one of the other advantages, aside from the fact that I think it makes our board work more efficient, this is a really important tool for the community to know when there might be an item that they are interested in and knowing when it is scheduled to be on the agenda. I had a conversation today with somebody about extracurricular activities, and I was able to point to the ABCD to say, this is something that you're really interested in seeing comprehensively, you know, come to that March meeting and you'll get, you know, an update that you wouldn't be able to get anywhere else. So, I, that's another reason I appreciate this tool. So that's another reason I appreciate this tool. All right. So we'll discuss this again in January. Other business, there was no Q and A document for the meeting because tonight was about answering our questions. Are there any items a board member would like to bring forward for consideration on the last school board meeting agenda of the year next week? Upcoming board meeting dates, we do have a special session, truth and taxation. Note the different time that the meeting will start. That is 6 o'clock P M. on December 17th. Immediately following, we will have our regular meeting. Our first meeting of 2025 will be January 7th at 5:30. That will be a regular meeting. A study session on January 14th at 5:30 P M. and a regular meeting at January 21st at 5:30 P M. The next item, 5.4 on the agenda, is a closed session for superintendent evaluation outcomes component. The next item is a closed session pursuant to Minnesota Statute, Section 13D05 subdivision 3B, which allows the board to go into closed session to evaluate the performance of an individual who is subject to its authority. While in closed session, the board will engage in a confidential discussion of the scheduled annual performance evaluation of Superintendent Ken Pecquell. In addition, pursuant to Minnesota Statute, Section 13D05, the board will summarize our conclusions regarding the evaluation at the December 17th meeting. Pursuant to the law I have cited, will someone make a motion to go into closed session?
Sub move second.
It has been moved and seconded to go into closed session. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The board moves into closed session at 6:58 P M. Just sit quietly until we get back.
I won't say a word.
No.
The board is back from closed session at 8:05 PM. Clerk McLaughlin, will you please read the list of people present in the closed session?
It was Chair Nathan, Director Marvin, Director McLaughlin, Director Garcia, Vice Chair Workman, Director Cook, Director Barlow, and Superintendent Pecow.
And hearing no other business, this meeting is adjourned at 8:05 PM.
I like that short.